Kristen, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is that we are the United States of America and we are a family of citizens, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can ask you to remain standing for just a moment for a moment of silence. We lost one of our community here at Town Hall. Frank Lenkowicz, who was a board inspector, had just joined the Town Hall team but had spent time on the Board of Ed's side prior to that, and his passing was sudden. So I ask you to spend a moment in silence and keep him in your thoughts. All right, thank you. I also want to take a moment to point out that Sacramon Kevin Kylie is not with us today. He had a personal emergency that has taken away from the meeting. So that -- but he said it was okay to go forward without his presence here, so we're going to do that. So first up, item number three is to consider an act upon the minutes regarding the end of July 2nd, 2014. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
And I will second that. Any discussion or changes to the minutes?
No.
All right, then we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And you're tracking that for?
Yep.
So I also want to point out that we have some bond documents to sign. We had hoped to get those done before the meetings. The documents are a little bit late in arriving here. That's part of the bond offering that you may have heard from a week or so ago, but we officially have to sign the documents today. So we will take a brief recess when the documents arrive here. So Kristen, myself, our treasurer Helen Devanzo, who's sitting in the back row there, and can go ahead and sign those. So moving on. Do we have Greg or all of our students here?
Yes.
Robert? Great. Then first up, we have some recognition for the Fairfield Lobo High School Business Challenge Team for taking first place in the Junior Achievement of Western Connecticut's High School Business Challenge and fourth place overall in the 2014 Junior Achievement National Titan Virtual Competition. That's fourth out of 53 teams. Will the team come on up? We have some free to look. Let's see. Why don't you all stand over here? Now, this is exciting because actually--
Here, come on around so we can be on film and there we go.
My question to Coach is here to tell my dog.
Of course, Tom. Come on up.
Yes, yes.
Correct. Congratulations, Coach. Coming from a long line of coaches, I appreciate the value of coaches in any team sport. I just, I'm excited about this. I've had a chance to attend some of the performances and competitions in the past. I didn't get to this year, so you've won this year. But I think it's exciting. We recognize sports teams on a lot of occasions. We don't get to recognize the academic achievement. And this is kind of a combination of two, a little bit of hybrid, because it's one part team, one part academic, one part creativity. And I love the fact you're getting introduced to business at this age, and I love the fact that Junior Achievement is putting this program on. It's something that I didn't get to participate in when I was in high school. I'm jealous of the opportunity you guys have. Kristen, would you like to add a few comments?
I would say to you that we're proud of you as a community for your initiative and for your persistence, for your competitive spirit, and your teamwork, both at the same time. And we are very fortunate to have you represent us as a community, and I think it's wonderful also. I think it's an awesome opportunity for you, and I thank your coach as well, because as the First Selectman pointed out, your coach is such a critical part of leading you and guiding you. So congratulations, it's well deserved.
Coach, would you or one of the members of the team like to tell us a little bit about the competition and how you did?
Sure.
Speak up at the podium, please.
The Titan game competition is a computer simulation game, so it has like seven or eight variables of pricing, production, R and D, and the teams have to decide. You know, all the teams start out in the same place, same amount of profit, same amount of sales. In the first round, they go in and they start running their companies and choosing what price. Then the computer, some complex computer algorithm blends everything together, and whoever makes the most profit starts out in first place, and you get ordered by how much profit you make. And then you react to that, and it's dynamic. So, you know, anytime you play, the same set of variables might lose the next round, it could win. So you have to play against the competitive environment you're doing. It's a very, very challenging game, and the competition we're up against was very strong. So these guys were amazing. They did a good job.
All right, now how many years has the team been together that long? Is this a--
It's an annual thing, and this is our fourth year, fifth, fourth or fifth year. I can't quite remember. I usually try to have two juniors and two seniors, so, and next year, these two will be together. So we'll still have part of our team together, and hopefully we'll do well again next year.
Well, excellent, excellent.
Can I ask a question also? So in that process, that dynamic process, did you all have to agree as you were making those decisions? So you had to communicate among yourselves and then agree to take steps?
Yeah, and the coaches aren't allowed in the room, so they're on their own.
Compromise was a big key part of it. We had a lot of competing ideas amongst ourselves, and we eventually came to compromise it and worked out perfectly every time, so.
They did not agree on a boss or anything, they just worked on a consensus.
They always mediated it.
Yeah. Obviously, the arbitrator.
That's great, thank you. Again, another great example for us. That's awesome.
And then we have a certificate for each of you here. Bill Motor? All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And Evan McGuffey? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Brett Damire? Whose brother I had a chance to coach at Pop Warner Football, so this is good. Good keeping in the family, good competitive family there. Isabel Chedier? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
There you go. And Thomas Rendell.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Coach.
You said it.
Great job.
Congratulations, and thank you.
All right, thank you very much. When you get back over here, we'll do one group shot. How long do you want to go? Based on the number of parents, I think it's several group shots.
Not a good place here. Do really some good things.
Got it? The Lobo Archives?
All right.
You forgot to say that you got us the policy house here in Maryland.
I did forget that.
Thanks to you.
No, actually, thanks to me. That's called good scouting recruiting. In order to get one for the team, we got another talented person here.
That's right.
Just what college coaches do all the time.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good to have you here.
Hi, Bob. With the regular pen?
Yeah, anything.
I have one, she had. Do you want blue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Helen will sign with this.
Okay, I got you. You want to take this?
What, are we going to take a quick break and do this? Are this, Bob, is this everything we have here to do these? With everyone's permission, we're going to take a quick break of about five minutes so we can sign off on these documents and then bring this meeting back to order. So you're welcome to relax, stay seated, take a walk, talk amongst yourselves. The next item up on our agenda is for the three reappointments for the Town Facilities Commission. Is it okay to take these as a group?
Yes.
To hear, consider an act upon the following reappointments to the Town Facilities Commission. This also requires RTM approval. Mr. Spino? Thank you. Harry Ackley, Republican, 25 Wagon Hill Road. The term is from 714 to 717. Kenneth D. Jones, Democrat, 320 Ferris Road. The term is 714 to 717. And Howard Rosenbaum, unaffiliated, 151 Wilton Road, and the term is 714 to 717. May have a motion to accept.
So moved.
And I will second that. These are reappointments, so I'm not sure if Jen, are the gentlemen coming in for this today?
They had said last week they were coming in.
All right, is Mr. Ackley, Mr. Jones, or Mr. Rosenbaum here? All right, not a problem. They've, I've had a chance to work with all three members of this commission that are up for reappointment during this term. They have done a great job and also have brought each in their own way different skills to our Town Facilities Commission and have helped review a number of projects and have added greatly to the value of town. We're in the process of reworking and reviewing the function of the Town Facilities Commission, where to get them involved in town building projects, and how we can increase their value. But they've put in a lot of volunteer time to help us through this point, and I want to thank them for that time. Do you have any comments in addition?
I do not.
All right. Then with that, if there's any public comment, seeing none, back to the board. We're ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to Mr. Ackley, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Rosenbaum, and you have our thanks for your work on the Town Facilities Commission. Next up, next up to hear, consider an act upon the following appointment to the Police Commission. Charlene S. Lebo, Democrat, 284 Berkeley Road, for a term of 1112 through 1117. This is to fill a vacancy created when Tom DeBrowski resigned. May have a motion to accept.
So moved.
And a second here, is Ms. Lebo here? Charlene, how are you? Would you like to come up for just a minute?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Any questions of Charlene?
No questions.
Okay.
Just if I comment, actually.
Go right ahead.
I just, I want to say thank you to Charlene for your many years of service, and we rely on volunteers like you who have served for many years, as well as the new volunteers who come in, and I see some of them here today, I'm grateful for that. And as I often do, I'll take this opportunity to remind people that the First Selectman's office is always looking for wonderful public servants like yourself, and you can contact the office.
Yes, please. There's at least 10 or 12 different boards and commissions that we have openings for, so if anyone out there wants to get involved, this would be a great opportunity. But speaking specifically to Charlene, you've been involved not only in town service but also very actively outside raising money for one of our local hospitals, and I want to thank you for all that you do. And you'll be putting on the night of music?
Yes, November 22nd, so I'd like to invite you all to come and help us. We raise money for pancreatic cancer victims and their families, and we go through St. Vincent's Medical Center.
You know, I can think of no greater statement when I look at all the volunteer work Charlene has done on different boards and commissions for the town and helping our town out, but the fact that she's taken her free time and gone out in addition to that and raised a lot of money to help people out. So we certainly look forward to hearing more news on that as we go forward, and we'll help you get the word out on that. Any further comments here?
Yeah, I concur. We are very fortunate for all the work that you've done. Thank you. I'm honored to serve the town of Fairfield, and especially the police and fire. We have two great departments. We have many other great departments, but I'm honored to be able to help and bring my experience to these commissions.
All right, Charlene, thank you. Any comments from the public at this time? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Charlene. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Jones just got here.
See, Mr. Jones has arrived in the back of the room. Mr. Jones, you are formally reappointed, so thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Glad to do it.
Good. Okay, if you'll excuse us for a moment, there are a couple other follow-up forms to be signed here, so we'll take a brief, and we'll keep it as brief as possible, break. Thank you. And again, thank you for your patience as we step through that. Next up, a report from Sullivan McKinney Elda Care Housing to hear a report. Thank you for joining us, and if I can just, this is a program we've had ongoing to provide certain of our not-for-profits and community service organizations an opportunity to take five or 10 minutes and tell the Board of Selectmen, and by way of that, tell our community what services they provide and give us a better understanding of the great work that so many of these organizations do. And I think we've all heard of Sullivan McKinney Housing, but we may not all be sure of what it does. So if you, please take a moment to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about it.
I'm Carolyn Durkey. I am the president of Sullivan McKinney Elder Housing here in Fairfield. We're located in the Old Grassmere School. I'll just start off by saying that Sullivan McKinney is a 40-unit affordable housing community designed to serve elderly housing households defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. New Samaritan Corporation is a corporation of congregational ministers that started to try to come together to solve elderly housing problems. And we were very fortunate that Reverend Rush from First Church was the first chair of this committee, and we opened our doors in 1989. At that point in time, my hair was a very different color. One of the things we do is we provide a decent, safe, and affordable community for seniors to age in place, and we've done this now for over 25 years. We've been very fortunate to be a recipient of a HUD Green retrofit grant funds in 2010. It was approximately $600,000, and in conjunction with refinancing of the property, enabled us to complete any energy-efficient upgrades, including appliance replacements, HVAC replacements, energy-efficient window installations, new roofing, and numerous upgrades to the resident's home. It's our goal to provide a community where residents can age in place with success, dignity, and comfort. We also have a resident services coordinator who links the community services to enhance the ability for these people to stay in their homes. Now, Sullivan McKinney is currently home to 43 residents. Our average age is my age. Eighty with 90 percent of our population being made up of female households, 10 percent of male households, and three of two-person households. The residents pay 30 percent of their annual adjusted income with all utilities included. Income limits for 2014 is 50 percent, which is considered very low, and the 30 percent is 29,300, which is considered extremely low. And then the lowest one is 17,600. That's basically the statistic, if you will, of what happens with Sullivan McKinney. We do have a number of veterans from World War II, as Vietnam, and any Vietnam veteran. A lot of our residents are busy. Of course, with a bunch of women, we all have crocheting and knitting groups. They make prayer shawls and blankets for St. V's. And then they have what they call a binkie control, which is knitting for an organization, they knit blankets for babies. And so we have a lot of good gifts that come from our residents of Sullivan McKinney. So are there any questions?
Just one comment. I've had a chance to visit the center from time to time, and I think you do a magnificent job of keeping up. It's well maintained, it looks beautiful on the inside, and it looks very modern. So you've done a great job of stewardship.
Everything is now up to code in terms of needs assessments with disabilities. If you go by there now, you'll see that we're working on the second part of the parking lot, the part that is closest to the thruway. And once that's done, you have a parking lot on both sides and a building in the middle. It's going to look really nice, and the people are, you know, residents are very happy with it. And you've been to the community room. So Jennifer, Jennifer was one of our original board members in another life.
But no, I think that you provide an invaluable resource to our community, helping out a very important segment of our community. So I want to thank you for all the work you've done on that. Kristen, do you have any to add?
Anybody have any questions?
I'll just comment that thank you very much, because I think you're right. You're kind of like a hidden gem that a lot of people, I think, don't realize is there doing all that you're doing, and it's a great partnership. I know there's some support that we connect with as a town, and I'm very, very grateful for the work that you're doing and the opportunity you're giving us.
Well, we're also grateful for your donations. If a community block grant money comes into us, and every little bit of that helps to keep an old building really up to code. And it really has been since, I think it was 2000, what did I say, 2010 or '12 when we got that grant. I mean, it was like weekly meetings, monthly meetings, trying to get everything organized and keep the people happy, because when you go into big renovations like that with the elderly, they're not too happy, even if it's going to be something good for them, because they just don't understand, you know, that you have to make a mess in order to clean it up a little bit.
Good. Thank you. If I could ask that when somebody's speaking, if we could kind of keep it down and keep the conversation back on here, please? Thank you. I want to thank you very much for all the work you do.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking time to fill us in on a bit of background on it.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. Next up, a report from the chief. Are there more forms to sign there? All right. Since you're going to be speaking next, Mr. Chief Fiscal Officer, why don't you hand me those? I will sign as needed, and you can give us an update. As most, as most residents have heard, we are starting a new revale program for the town. We're doing what's called a full data collection revaluation. We have people literally going out to knock on every door in town to kind of help collect the most accurate data we can. It seemed reasonable, as part of our publicity for this, to take a few moments at the Board of Selectmen meeting and highlight this, so residents at home will know what we're up to and what's going on. So I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Fiscal Officer, Bob Mayer, and our Tax Assessor, Don Ross. Gentlemen?
Thank you. Just for those present here, and the signatures have to do with the bond sale, this has to get out tonight, so that's what we had to do. The lawyers just delivered them, so that's why we're doing the signatures right now. So I apologize for that. As Mike just indicated, Don Ross is our assessor. This board, as you all know, voted on a full valuation process, revaluation process, and what we're going to talk about today is not why we went through that process, but what's happened subsequent to then and where we are today. And we'll let Don take you guys through that.
We did meet multiple times during the past few months, developing revaluation plans and speaking with various revaluation contractors. We negotiated a contract with Vision Government Solutions of Northboro, Massachusetts, and we signed the contract on July 2nd of 2014. Together, we developed an overall project plan and a work completion timeline. We're developing a community outreach and education program collaborating with Vision Government Solutions. We've informed the Fairfield Police of revaluation personnel and activities within town. Vision has established a Fairfield revaluation office on the second floor of the old town hall, and Vision has a town phone number. We've printed a press release in local newspapers advising the public of revaluation activities. We published a paid advertisement of revaluation activities. We've published a revaluation process information on the town website and specifically on the assessor's office homepage. Property data collection by Vision personnel began this past Monday, on July 14th, and the public has been very cooperative with the process. They're requesting inspection appointments from Vision personnel, and they're verifying the identities of Vision field personnel with the Vision people and with the police department.
Just a little bit of summarization there. We start the process. Every home is, every home in town will be visited. Every home in town will receive a knock on the door, and if no one answers, a letter and a revisit for an attempt to make an appointment to enter the home, and also every business is to be evaluated for this process to get the best optimal valuation of the town as a whole. And so expect a knock on the door. And again, the Vision people wear identifying clothing, vests, et cetera. They have badges, and just make sure that if someone approaches you, that they have that identified clothing, that they have those badges. If there's any questions, you can obviously call the police department or go online and get the phone numbers for the, for the local office here, or for Don's office to make the call. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Just a comment, first of all, following on, is that when I took office back in June of 2011, there were, we had just started to implement the last revale. There were a lot of questions that came up, specifically from the beach area and from Southport. We made a commitment back then to make sure in the next revale, we would do everything we could to collect the most accurate data, make sure it was the fairest collection of data, so that, again, the goal here is so that everybody pays their fair share, not a penny more and not a penny less. And it's all relative to how your property is valued against somebody else's. So it's really important for the residents, and Don, thank you for pointing out that everybody's cooperating so far, that to let the inspectors do their job, let the appraisers do their job, that's going to help the town do our job in terms of collecting taxes in the fairest way to all of our residents. So we, based on Don's recommendations, we've gone back through, looked at some different options, and this seemed to be the best way to do the thorough, most thorough, most accurate approach and live up to the commitment we made three years ago to get this done right. And again, timing wise, this is for the 10-1, 2015 assessment, and those, that assessment will be used on the July 1st, 2016 tax bills. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Kristen, did you have any final?
Yes, thank you for being here and for explaining that today. And I, my question is, if a resident were to refuse entry to someone knocking on their door, would they be in any way penalized? Would they have a chance to have someone come back if they wanted to go ahead and verify and wait before they let anyone come in?
Yes, they, no, they wouldn't be penalized. Yes, they can reschedule.
Great.
And then one thing that I just thought of during Mike's comments, part of our public outreach program and communication program is going to be presentations to various town bodies, PTAs, whoever. If anyone has a suggestion or a recommendation or a request, just call Don's office and we'll put you on the communication list. Okay?
Good. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, from the Fair TV Operational Committee, this is an item that was postponed from July 2nd. To hear, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Fair TV Operational Committee. Whereas the Fair TV Operational Committee intends to seek grant funding from the Cable Advisory Council Area 2 for the support of education program, and whereas the Fair TV Operational Committee seeks to, intends to seek grant funding from the Cable Advisory Council Area 2 for support of the government programming, now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with a request from the Fair TV Operational Committee, the First Selectman be and hereby is authorized to approve applications to the Cable Advisory Council Area 2 for the support of education and government programming. To execute any documents necessary to facilitate the town's participation in said grants and to administer any grant funds-- the town's participation in said grants, and to administer any grant funds provided in connection therewith. May have a motion to accept.
So moved.
And I'll be the second on that. Now, this was postponed from an earlier date. I believe that, Mr. Cannelly, did you have any comments or any?
Quickly.
Please. And if you'd just, again, introduce yourselves.
Sure. Jim Cannelly, I'm the chairman of the Fair TV Operational Committee, 117 Edgewood Place, Fairfield. Thanks very much for entertaining this. My apologies, my father, my in-laws' 50th wedding anniversary, I screwed up and thought Thursday was Wednesday, so sorry.
You're getting in trouble on these dates.
I did get a little in trouble there, all that public service. I don't know if I cut back. I got a TPZ tonight, should be very exciting. Anyway, Mr. First Selectman, Selectwoman McCarthy-Behe, thank you for entertaining this. I provided you some background, but basically, as you know, we thought this was sort of a pro forma matter at first. But there was a misunderstanding with the committee and the Board of Selectmen in terms of what we would just ask for through the CAC2 grant processes. Not to go over this in any great length, but essentially their funds were frozen and the process has been, was reversed, what was delayed six months with the possibility of it being, maybe perhaps, there being no funds for the entire year. Originally, I thought about, I provided you with our alternate, as backup, our alternate capital requests. But my thought is, and I'll leave this up to you to decide, is essentially what you're being asked to support is just that we go ahead and ask for funds. But I thought rather than maybe kinda make a decision today or even at this point about really what the long-term strategy is about whether Fairfield taxpayers should fund the kind of the basic operations, and therefore you don't have to worry year to year if you're chasing money to pay people to film meetings through a grant process that may not have it, versus Fairfield supporting, say, capital expenditures, cameras and live capability versus having CAC do it where you'd go through a grant process and you'd have a target for what capital expenditures you anticipated and hoped you got it, but it wouldn't break you. In other words, if you only got half the money for labor through the grant process, you could only do half the meetings. But if you didn't get that extra camera or you didn't get that new live box, it just meant maybe that year, you, you know, could, you wouldn't do both high school graduations live simultaneously or something. Probably wouldn't do either in that situation, but it would be the best if you had to both. But my thought is, is what we would do rather than have that discussion, Mr. First Selectman would be, that the committee has to sign off on the recommendations of the system manager presented to us on capital. And this, and the committee also has to take into account the direction of this body, since we are an ad hoc committee of this body. So the compromise, we think, would be simply to submit an application that would include requests for the labor funds that would have been sought in this year, and close to a modified request for the capital expenditures that we anticipated seeking. And then see how things go with CAC2. Going forward, I think there's a good discussion to have when there's more time and we can lay that case, and it's not, the money's already been handed to us, but we can, looking forward as to what is sensible. If it takes about $45,000 a year to cover the core meetings, these primary meetings, this body, the BOE, the BOF, the RTM and the TPZ, it costs about $45,000 to do that, and it costs about $3,000 a year for the server that delivers it over the internet, where should that annual budget come from? Should it be chased in a grant process from multiple towns, or should there be some predictability so that that money's always there and it should come just from town side funds? But, Mr. First Selectman, you aggressively helped us to see that in an emergency, we had those dollars. And it seems to me that having to decide that policy question kind of post factor doesn't seem fair to you, to the Board of Finance. So that would be our approach. If you approve this resolution, the committee is likely, in our discussions, but we're gonna have a meeting next week prior to the July 31st deadline to turn in our application, we'd likely simply submit a request seeking both sets of funds and see what happens in terms of what they're willing to award us. If that's, but that would be something that you would find acceptable, that's what we would do.
I think if you did that, what would be the total of the two?
Well, right now, we have just under $18,000 if you look at the two, the two applications. We have to do two applications because CAC2 views Fair TV not as one entity, even though we built it as such to save money. I didn't, when I was putting this together, I didn't buy two servers, I got one server that served two channels. But we have to divide every penny between those channels and assign it a dollar value. We can differentiate how much we ask for it based on what we think the total amount of usage will be, but combined, it would be, I would say, the total amount would be 18 plus 24, it would be 42, about, just under $42,000. Now, we've had high years, we've seen as many dollars as almost $38,000, and we have one spectacular year in the process where both channels were, you know, very well funded. But we've also had, I won't kid you, we also had years where much less has been provided. And there is $8,000 from the current $100,000 pool that was used in the, in the legal expenses involved in the recent successful legal challenge by Soundview Community Media against the CAC2. So there is less of a pool, but it does seem to me that at least in this way, we'll honor the original intent that of the First Selectman's efforts to, you know, protect Fair TV and keep it whole, and of the Board of Finance's willingness to do that as an added item. And then we can come back to you and let you sort of know how much of those dollars that were provided by the town were indeed returned through this process and then have a longer or a more detailed discussion about what's the appropriate way to go, whether it's, should the town be supporting capital expenditures or operational expenditures? So.
Okay. Did you have any questions?
No, I mean, I think that sounds, actually, I shouldn't say no. That sounds like a good idea. I just wanted to clarify, the resolution itself really doesn't specify that we are necessarily voting on the, that allocation. It really is a resolution that allows the First Selectman with the help of the council.
Yeah, I think the assumption of the resolution is really that the First Selectman will follow the guidance of the Board of Selectmen in terms of what to do on that. And I think that that's part of what's come up. Now, there are four towns that split the normal $100,000, but the shared $92,000.
And actually, they each have, some of them, I'm sorry, each of them also have, some have multiple channels. So it's not simply the towns, it's that the towns also may run an education and government channel. So in totality, there will be probably more than four divided requests. But it can be that some of them don't have that larger request. And I just felt, the point was, there was a, there was essentially disparity between what we thought we were doing and we wanted to make sure we honored your efforts.
No, thank you, and I appreciate the feedback. But the towns are Milford?
Milford, Orange, Woodbridge, and I think, Woodbridge?
Fairfield.
Fairfield, that's what I wanted to say. Right, exactly. Trick question. But, yes.
And Milford's about our size, neither two are a little bit on the smaller side.
And again, the thing about it is, is that while there's differentiation in population, sometimes it's, you know, some towns are smaller, some towns are larger, often the requests are built on what are these communities looking to do. In our case, for example, our capital side request is very exciting, and not to bore you with this, you've got much to do, but for example, that idea of a simultaneous graduation live is very much possible under this potential capital request. And why that's so exciting is, we're not that far away from being able to ultimately broadcast live, not only locally, I mean, here in Fairfield, but to eventually take that out to the internet. I mean, that's a step or two away, but once you have dynamic live capability, where you can go various places on the town network like schools and all, imagine a family where folks can't get to the graduation, but they can watch the graduation on the internet and then call afterward. How nice would that be? So those are the kinds of things that we think in the long term, this capital expenditure will move forward and make us very positive.
Okay. Mr. Cannelly, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess in terms of our discussion on this, and I know Mr. Cannelly had some thoughts, and it's too bad he was called away at this point, not to be here. In talking to his, coming out of our last meeting, we agreed to reach out to the other boards and specifically the Board of Finance and RTM to see what their thoughts were. And having talked to both at the chair and some members of the Board of Finance, having talked to some of the leadership on the RTM. If we go back to January, we were looking at, and I'm gonna speak in rough numbers, that the CAC had provided the, and had for a number of years, provided the foundation grant of about 25 grand to get Fair TV off the ground. And again, I've gotta give kudos to Mr. Cannelly in both being visionary and putting all this stuff together, but being, I don't know if creative is a strong enough word in terms of how to figure out all the duct tape needed to patch together this electronically to make it all work. A couple of years ago, the proposal was for the town to add another 25,000 to kind of solidify this, to get to, and I'm speaking in rough numbers, Mr. Cannelly spoke in terms of 48, 49, but I'm gonna say 50 for a rough number, roughly $50,000 to solidify Fair TV and keep it going. When we came into this year, there were two things. We were looking at both putting that 50,000 in the budget, 25 from CAC, and actually 25 in our technical budget, the budget that is raised by tax dollars. 25 grand we're expecting from CAC as part of their annual grant funding, which they'd been pretty consistent in providing. There were, there was some talk early on with Don Leslie and IT about the need to get new servers, upgrade some of the equipment, that type of thing. And at that time, I'd asked him to come back with a plan to help support that so that we could run that through our town process. In the midst of that, I'm gonna say in, wow, it was early March, Soundview, not Soundview, but CAC notified us that because of the legal situation with Soundview, they would not be able to commit to this money. So the town board stepped up all the way through and, again, with Mr. Cannelly's help and Fair TV committee's help, and funding, jumping the funding from 25 to roughly $50,000 out of the annual budget this year. So, and in a very tight year where we obviously went back and cut a lot of things, the boards pretty much uniformly agreed across the board to support Fair TV because of the value it has to our community. The conversations I've had recently said, look, let's go back to January, let's reset that, and let's get the money restored that we put in as part of that. And then realizing that Fair TV has more growth to do. There's, again, Mr. Cannelly is amazingly visionary in how to approach that. But we can address that through our, as I talked to Don Leslie about back in January, approach that through our non-recurring process, to have a plan and a process. We've, up to this point, I don't think that the boards have gotten a plan, but also to be fair, there's a parallel path going on with the RTM to establish an ordinance that clearly establishes Fair TV as part of the town government process and communication process and how that would work going forward. So there's a lot of moving pieces kind of right at this time. But I would suggest that we look at what we intended to do from the start and then look at getting a, kind of a hardware plan, but also just a, because there's so many things, it's not just hardware. It's not just a replacement plan as we talk in some cases, it's about additional capability and where we're going. And then we get the commission to do that and then have a chance to explain that to all the boards and bring the funding forward for that. So I think where Mr. Cannelly is trying to lead us, it makes sense that we will probably end up going in that direction, but I think this lets us take it one step at a time and let the, let the boards be involved in understanding what they're voting for as part of that process.
Right. Yes, I concur with what you're saying, absolutely. I think that the core services function, as Mr. Cannelly has talked about, is something that is invaluable to so many members of the community who aren't able to come to meetings but do appreciate the access. Those additional capabilities, Mr. Cannelly used the example of the graduations, and I might use the example of concurrent TPNZ and Board of Education meetings happening on one night, and how wonderful for people to be able to switch back and forth and watch both while at home. So, but I agree, the plan to do it in this manner makes sense to me, and I think it honors at least the underlying conversation, though it may not have been overt at the time because we didn't know what to expect, but I am very comfortable with moving forward in this, in this way.
Okay. Okay, we go to some public comment?
Yep.
Any comment from the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and Mr. Cannelly, thank you again for all that you've done.
Thank you both, I very much appreciate it.
Next up, item number 10. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that in accordance with paragraph 4A of that certain lease between the town of Fairfield and the Fairfield Theater Company, Inc., dated June 30th, 2003, consent is hereby granted for such alterations, installations, changes, replacements, additions, or improvements substantially as shown on plans submitted by the Fairfield Theater Company regarding premises located at 70 Sanford Street, Fairfield, Connecticut, provided that the Fairfield Theater Company shall comply with all provisions of said lease regarding same. May have a motion to accept.
So moved.
And a second. And just to summarize this before I ask Mr. Reed to come up, in simplest forms, the theater company is looking to add a theater in the warehouse that has been situated there. That's been one of the expansion components that have been talked about, I believe, since day one with the initial lease. They're coming back to us with a plan, they need the town's approval to go forward, and they're here to present that to us. So that's what we're up to, and we say the town's approval, that really rests with the Board of Selectmen at this point. So, Mr. Reed, if you'd come in, fill us in a little bit on what you're up to. And if you'd just introduce yourself.
Thank you, I'm Mr. Tetra, and thanks to the Board of Selectmen for allowing me to skip forward. My name is John Reed, I'm the executive director and producing artistic director of Fairfield Theater Company, a position I've held for about two and a half years. Also a Fairfield resident for the past four years since I moved to the region. I'd like to acknowledge some of our board members, Lou Human, if you'd raise your hand, is the vice chair of the board, Charlie McDonald's also on our board, Michael Smith of Michael Smith Architects is actually doing the architectural work, I shouldn't say pro bono in case anybody else approaches him, but is also a Fairfield resident, and Pete Penzer, who is a former president of the board and has also been, I think, part of this from the very beginning, so some of the historical questions, I mean, we may be able to answer. If I could just briefly give you an overview. In 2002, one of the things, as I began thinking about how we might improve this property, I uncovered some plans and processes that were actually acknowledged in the lease, which was dated originally 2002, then 2003, and it talked about two performing arts spaces. FTC proceeded with building the first space we call Stage 1, which is 225 occupancy, and it is, it began primarily as a theater company and, but also, but over time, it really morphed more primarily into live music, and I think they, you know, just simply stated, we found that there was an audience for live music where it was very difficult to find an audience to sustain an organization like this in theater. Like all organizations, we were hit very hard by the recession and, again, before my time here, but, but that really put plans for building up the warehouse on hold for a period of years. And when I came on board, as I say, two and a half years ago, we began to revisit the conversation. FTC has really had a transformation the last couple of years. We were from an organization that had been struggling a bit, I wouldn't say much, much of that was due to the recession, to an organization that now closes the books on two years where we're operating in the black. We've expanded programmatically. In addition to live music, we also just hosted a children's theater company there for two years. We opened the art gallery, which is curated by Artplace, a Fairfield County Cooperative of Artists. And, and we've also, so we've expanded music, theater, the art gallery, et cetera. Today, Stage 1 is really one of the most highly respected performing arts venues in the region among artists, among musicians, among patrons. And we do about 175 shows a year there today. And 40,000 patrons a year and growing, we estimate, and this estimate is based on research I won't go into, we'd be happy to provide copies, as a follow-up, that we estimate that the patrons probably generate about a million dollars a year to the surrounding businesses. And that's, the research that shows the per patron spend in surrounding businesses. We also, a large part of our mission, helping other nonprofits by hosting fundraisers about 15 to 20 a year. And we help not only with, we rent the space, but we also, as importantly, help produce these fundraisers. And the estimate is about $500,000 a year that are raised for other nonprofits through the work and through our partnership with them. We began a film series this last year, and we're doing 15 to 20 films a year that include a Films That Rock series that are music focused, Community Cinema, which was part of the independent lens of public television, PBS, the Telluride Mountain Film Festival, et cetera. And we just see that, we've seen the community has responded. The films, the average attendance, I think, has been about 80 to 90 people, which is not bad. So our goal is, and we also have a Saturday morning kids program, which are workshops for children. also have a Saturday morning kids program, which are workshops for children who are in the surrounding community that are underserved, that don't have access to private instruction and music, and so that's one of the projects we also have, and that workshop serves about 30 to 40 children a year, most of the children are from Bridgeport, but they, and eight workshops a year. So we do, we take our responsibility to the community at large very seriously. So today, we need to expand. We do, I should say, we've been doing concerts at the Norwalk Concert Hall over the past year, we also do concerts at the Klein Auditorium at Bridgeport, and that's part of the, of expanding to a larger base of potential patrons, and it's also the logistics of just operating a larger venue. But we'd like to expand programmatically. We'd like to see more children's theater, more theater, more in the way of visual arts, more film, more cultural and community events, which are really part of the warp and woof, if you will, of FTC and what we do, and also expanding musical genres as well. And we need that space, and obviously, the warehouse itself, for those of you who are not familiar with it, is about 8,000 square foot raw space with no infrastructure today. There's no heat and air, there's no sprinklers for fire suppression, no bathrooms. Until two years ago, the warehouse was filled, kind of stacked to the rafters with old props, furniture, obsolete equipment, things that had been donated that we hadn't found a practical use for, so we cleaned it out, painted the walls, painted the floor, and lit the place, and had our first gala two years ago, and it was extraordinary. I mean, they just transformed the space, and those, any of you that may have come saw that, I think the community began approaching me, can we use this for another gala, for another nonprofit fundraiser, or maybe for a Sweet 16 party, things like that. So, that really reignited the vision, and our board took this very seriously, and we take our charge as stewards of this. This is a, it's a nonprofit organization, we're stewards of this organization. We are, it's a public-private partnership with the Town of Fairfield, the Town of Fairfield being more than a landlord, really owning the property. But in that, taking that, we began to try to visualize how we could maximize the use of that. And Michael Smith from Michael Smith Architects, who is also a patron of the organization, volunteered to do the design work, you've got a little brief of that, a couple of pages of that. And the, we've, just the word of that, we began to entertain questions from others, again, as I say, about other fundraisers, other concerts, other types of arts events and cultural events. Our finance committee has done its due diligence and believes that the plan presented will result in positive cash flow for the organization. And I should say that the board has been extremely generous, and the board members have personally committed about 50% of the construction cost to date. And continuing, one of our board members, Ryan Moran, Fairfield resident at Cultural Construction, has taken on the general contractor role, again, as a donation to Fairfield Theater. And from there, we came and we talked to Mr. Tetra about our plans, and just began to kind of explain, and also to Mr. Lesser, I'm sure he's here, the town attorney, to talk about our lease and whether these things might be covered under the lease, which really brought us to this part of the process. And just a couple of things, we do think that the impact on town will be very positive. More patrons, and these are people, it's not like people coming to Fairfield to enjoy the arts and help create that vibrant scene, which has become Fairfield, and, but it's also keeping Fairfield residents here. I mean, you don't have to hop on a train to hear a world-class musician, or to go to a play reading, or to go to an art gallery, you can really walk right into downtown FTC, FTC and downtown. And so, we do believe that there will be a significant increase in commerce, again, based on the same formula of sort of per patron, and I think it will expand Fairfield's reputation as a very exciting, vibrant place to live. I love living here, I've lived in quite a few places over the years, my career's taken me around a bit, but it's a wonderful town, and it has a very lively arts and cultural scene, and I think FTC, I can't take credit for that, because honestly, I came a long, long after the project started, but I can say almost objectively that it certainly has done a lot to, really to bring that reputation to the Town of Fairfield. And so, I think with that, any questions that you may have, I'm certainly, certainly happy to address.
Do you have any questions or comments, Lee O?
Sure. Is, I saw, I think, a larger drawing that Mr. Smith had, are we going to get to see that up here as well?
Be happy, and in fact, he's came for that very purpose, in case you have the opportunity.
I would love, love to see and hear a little bit more on that scale.
So, this is essentially the floor plan of the warehouse. The existing Stage One is right over here, this is the parking lot, right down here, train station over here. Essentially, as John said, it's just an empty shell at the moment. And we're going to create a, basically create a secondary small entrance here with a, with a new canopy over it, just to mark the entrance, you know, bathrooms, concessions, this is configurable seating here, nothing's going to be permanent, it'll be sometimes-
It's an open space with no fixed seating, so it's configurable for events, for concerts.
Right, and then we've got, and then we've got a stage, you know, a stage here, which will be removable for certain, you know, for flexibility for certain types of events. And then over here, bathrooms and mechanical. In addition to that, we have, up above this area right here, there is a mezzanine. And that's shown, that's shown here, here's your stage, here's your mezzanine. So, this is sort of a little second level up there, which has stair access here, stair access here, and then your main soundboard will be right, right in the middle here. This is a conceptual, just a conceptual elevation of the building. Right now, it's an existing building, probably all, probably all know it. But essentially, this would be the entry, the building would remain largely the same from the exterior, other than, other than, you know, sprucing up the entry, and we'll probably have some kind of drop-off or something in terms of how you access the building. And this is a little, this is a little steel canopy, with, you know, some light fixtures and a little bit of landscaping just to, just to mark the entry a little bit.
And all in all, we expect to invest somewhere between 1.2 and 1.4 million dollars in improvements to the property, of which we, as I say, our board has committed roughly half of that. The state has granted us $100,000 for the fire suppression, which is an important part of that project. We will be sprinkling the entire facility, Stage One, et cetera, as part of that improvement, just to enhance and improve safety.
Just a question, thank you, Mr. Smith, for that. The mezzanine?
Yes.
What's the primary purpose? Is it the sound up there is where with every other function, just thinking about accessibility, stairs, obviously, there's no elevator in the plans for that, so what would be the primary function up on the mezzanine?
It's another, just another useful space. It's the idea of leveraging, leveraging the facility and use as much of the space as possible, so.
Right, it's a high volume, so you have, you have the space there. It's a different, it's a different environment for different events.
We might do private receptions, for example, in that mezzanine, some of the pre-show things that we do today in the art gallery with, as part of performances at Stage One, we've sort of envisioned something like that as well.
I don't have other questions right now, I just, I thank you. I mean, this is a tremendous and exciting project. I think, you know, Fairfield Theater Company has been a real gift to the community, and I think you put it very well in your comments, so I, you also answered one of my questions, which was to, to Mr. Lesser in terms of the conversation with the town attorney, and just making sure everything connects well with the lease, and all the plans and projects go together with what's allowable within the lease.
And just to add on to that, I think that, one, when you talk about public-private partnerships, you kind of look for the partner side of this, and looking back, the theater company's already spent, I believe, over $500,000 in improvements to the space, just on the Stage One area, and you're talking about, you know, another 1, 2, 1, 4 level improvements, and that's, that's a tremendous investment, and shows your commitment to downtown. Theater Company, especially during the recession, as you pointed out, has really been, I don't know if the correct word is anchor or engine, for our downtown community, but one or both of those in terms of keeping people flowing to downtown Fairfield, which supports stores, restaurants, really the economic oasis that Fairfield has become over the last four or five years. When I travel to other communities and look at their vacancy rates, look at the downtown, look at the restaurants, Fairfield's amazing in terms of what we've been able to keep going throughout this, and keep our merchants and our restaurants and our community in a real sense alive, and during all this time. I'm also impressed with how much work you do for not-for-profits, in terms of providing a resource for them, to help them generate funds to their good work for our community. And I've had a chance to attend a number of those at your facility, and I want to thank you for the work you do on behalf of our larger community from that standpoint, which is not necessarily expanding your primary mission, but I see that you've undertaken as least a secondary mission in terms of helping the community in a broader sense from doing that. And I've also been very impressed with the way you've integrated Art Place into your operation, and afforded artists in our community a chance both to display their work, but also kind of the very synergistic way that we're getting more foot traffic in as part of that.
Moving the lobby so that every, everyone who walks in FTC now walks to the art gallery, which is a, really a wonderful way for that art to be seen.
Yeah, I think that's prospered very well, and from when we first talked about how you're going to integrate them in and keep the art part of that going, I think you've done a very good job in that regard. Two questions as we go through, one, as we talk, there's no cost to the town in what you're doing.
No. We would gratefully receive any contributions the town would like to make, but we have not factored that into the budget.
All right, thank you, thank you. Just want to be clear on that, because obviously, these are substantial plans, and one of the questions that comes up is what's the cost to the town in doing that? So, from that standpoint, there is no cost to the town, this is not coming out of Fairfield tax dollars, in that sense. Then, second, can you give us a brief picture of what you expect the town, gets some revenues back now in terms of, I think it's $2 a ticket?
Yes.
Can you talk to us a little bit about how this would impact that?
Today, that per-ticket revenue is approaching about $48,000 a year to the town. We believe that that's going to double over a space of about three years. And, I mean, obviously, I can't perfectly predict, but we just believe in our projections in terms of the usage of that facility. So we think there'll be about a 100% increase, it will, over a ramp period of three years. We also, as a good faith gesture, we've offered to give 5% of any for-profit rentals, so when we rent to a business or a, or a corporation for doing some sort of an event there. Not the nonprofits, just because we give them a special rate, and we're trying to encourage them as best we can. And we think that that, we're estimating that over three years, that that should ramp to about 100,000 total rental revenue, and roughly $5,000 to the town on an annual basis. So if, you know, if this goes as predicted and as hoped, we do believe that the revenue to the, to the town will effectively double, ramping up over three years.
Okay, now, in looking at that, having the revenue double is certainly a good thing from the town's standpoint, but I would think that also means, because we're basically making money as a fee on top of your ticket sales, that means you're doubling the number of ticket sales, which what I really hear is we're doubling the number of people coming into downtown, and I would think that's music to the ears, forgive the expression, for all the restaurants.
I would think so. I think we, through the tickets sold, not including the nonprofit fundraisers, et cetera, about 25,000 a year, we estimate 40,000 people walk through the doors a year at Stage One, and we believe that that number will effectively double over that period of time. And I think that, one of the things I should say, too, is the type of people, if you wondered who our patrons are, they're the residents, the people in this room, several patrons I've seen here, actually. They are Fairfield County people, average age is not, it's not a young crowd, I'm often not the oldest person in the room, which is encouraging to me, but-
But you are the oldest person here today, right?
I'm the oldest person here, by far, easily. So, but, but yes, I do think so, and I think that the burgeoning restaurant scene, I think, can only really gain from that, as, as well as the other businesses. I mean, as people come to FTC and Fairfield, we do get anecdotal, we hear stories of people who are moving to the area, they picked Fairfield. One of the deciding factors is the thriving arts scene.
Yeah, in fact, I had just a discussion like that the other day with some folks that I had met, that were introduced to me as, a couple that had just come to Fairfield, and they mentioned just that. And I think we've all experienced times where we've been out and heard people talking about their leaving dinner and going to the FTC as part of that. That's happened to me on a number of occasions.
I did a, occasionally do a show of hands at a show, and I've asked, at one show in particular, I asked how many people at the show that night had gone to a surrounding restaurant or business for dinner prior to the show. Literally, 2/3 of the people raised their hands. I said, "How many of you will be going out after for a drink for dessert or something like that?" Half of the, you know, half of the audience raised their hand. And I think, again, that's not scientific, but I think it really is a fair representation of what we see.
Okay. Any further questions?
No, I would just add that you're, you're right up, and the backup for the packet was very helpful, and that members of the public can also access that as well, so that they can see more specifically-
Absolutely.
-that, and see that information in some of the plans as well.
And if I may, I'm always available for any community member who would like a tour, who has ideas, suggestions, concerns, I certainly would make myself available, and, and give freely of time to just, you know, as, again, as part of, we are part of this community in huge ways.
Thank you. Any comments from the public?
One last thing you didn't mention is-
Excuse me, if you're gonna, excuse me, if you're gonna comment, you need, you need to come up to the podium, introduce yourself.
One thing John neglected to mention is-
But you just state your name, and then-
Charlie McDonald.
Thank you, Charlie, and if you would.
Okay. The one thing John neglected to mention, it will create a lot of employment opportunities.
Good, thank you, another positive. Thank you very much. All right, back to the board, any follow-up comments?
Just one more comment, back to what I had said earlier about volunteers, and I think you have an amazing group of volunteers, some who have been volunteering in many capacities for many years, and others who are newer to the process. It's great to see that kind of connection in the community, too.
Absolutely, and we also, a number of interns, in fact, the high school internship program, we've had some fantastic interns.
That's great.
We have a number of young people who are seeking to learn about a career in, in the arts, who come and intern for us, and some of those actually end up staying as employees as they were on the ropes.
That's great.
All right, any further comments, questions, or thoughts? All right, we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
And please keep us updated on your progress.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Riverfield School Building Committee. This requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. "To hear, consider, and adopt the bond resolution entitled, a resolution amending and restating a resolution adopted by the representative town meeting on June 24, 2013, entitled, 'A Resolution Appropriating $14,485,766 for the Costs Associated with the Expansion and Renovation of Riverfield Elementary School, and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation, to Increase the Appropriation and Bond Authorization to $15,985,766.'" Before we get started, I just want to mention that as much as Mr. Kylie is not with us today, he did make a great effort to let me and Selectman McCarthy Veighi know that he fully supports this project and the Riverfield community, and he wanted to make that message known on his behalf. So with that as an intro, may I have a motion to accept?
For discussion, so moved.
And a second. Mr. Quinn, will you take us through this?
Yes. Tom Quinn, 88 Myro Street. I'm chairman of the Riverfield School Building Committee. We started this project a number of years ago, and we're in the process of going through with all our due diligence, and part of that was the expansion of the gym. And we were going to expand the gym outward, which we are, so that there'd be enough room for the children to, to gather in the gym at one time. As we did that, we also tested for any type of carcinogens, or asbestos, and PCVs, and unfortunately, there were PCVs within the walls of the gym. So we immediately put together a remediation plan, for, as we do for anything that we find, and we sent it on to the EPA, and the wall that we're taking down, we would take care of all the PCVs properly and get it disposed of. The other three walls were what we call encapsulated, between the outdoor cement, okay, and the indoor cinder block. indoor cinder block, so that it was totally encapsulated. We told that to the EPA and said, you know, "Based upon your prior experience, you've allowed encapsulated PCBs to stay there because they presented no danger to anyone." EPA came back and said, "Well, we've changed our process on that, and yes, you can keep it because there is no clear and present danger, but only for 10 years. So within that 10-year period, you need to make that hole and get rid of the PCBs." And that's the change, okay, that they did there. So they sent us a form, called a consent agreement and final order, where they said, "Hey, you guys got 10 years, maybe we'll give you another five, but I'm not going to tell you that now, but you got 10 years to get rid of it. So you can either do it now, or you can do it within the 10 years." And I met with the first selectman, and he said, "Well, you need to find out the financial ramifications," which obviously, we had to do that. So we took a look at them, we took a very hard look at the money needed, both in terms of doing it upfront and close, which is now, or waiting three, four, five, 10 years out. We got the results back, and what we have determined as the proper recommendation to this body is that we dovetail the gym PCB remediation, okay, for the remainder of the three walls, which entails taking down all three walls and taking down the roof and the decking and rebuilding it with our current Riverfield project. And that would cost the town $1,863,553,000, of which $1,700,000 of that is construction only, okay? The other 100,000 is what we call owner or soft costs. We looked at that and said, "Hey, that would take our current project in terms of a timetable to completion to January 2016." And we then said, "Is that the best economical term?" We looked at doing it as a separate project in 2016, and it automatically escalated because it's a separate project by over $700,000. So you're going from $1,900,000 to $2.6 million by a separate project. What our strategy is, so you know, because what we want to use this is an add alternate to the bids that are going out for the major renovation project. And by doing that, we maintain the ability to keep the same tradesmen doing the concrete, electrical work, the PCB remediation, okay, that are doing it on the main project and doing it on this project. We will not have to restart the program. We have fencing in there, we have gravel in there, we have all the approvals in there. So by combining and dovetailing it with what we're doing now, we save a significant amount of money. And so for the town, in our judgment, $1,853,000 is the most effective and efficient way of handling it. It's not where we want to be, obviously, but it is what it is. The EPA said, "You need to fix it within 10 years." We're saying, "Do it now. It is financially more responsible to do it now. In 10 years, for giving example, 2024, for those of us that'll be around, it'll probably cost a neighborhood of $3.5 million or more," which is basically double. So, you know, it's not something that I think we want to kick the can down though, so to speak. So we're asking to, that the amendment that you read be changed, the number that was in there was a placeholder, that it be read that we add $1,863,553 to the original number.
You could just repeat that again?
Sure. $1,863,553, which will total out, if my math is correct, $16,349,319.
And could you repeat that, please?
Sure. And be happy to answer questions of anybody on the team, but willing to answer any questions you may have.
As a start, did you have anything, or, okay, I'll ask a couple?
Go ahead.
All right, just to kick things off. One, as I understand this, the bottom line is the PCBs are in the building. The EPA is not going to let them stay there.
Nope.
Now that we have disclosed that we have them, we can't stop the project and not remove them.
Must be tested, yes.
We have to remove them one way or the other as of today.
That's correct.
All right. So the only question we have is when in the next 10 years we do that, the cost to doing that is going to be roughly the same, no, it's not going to be roughly the same. My concern on the cost of doing this, if we delay, that the likelihood that the cost for cleanup on PCBs will either increase faster than the rate of inflation for construction or through a change in regulations on what's required, increase dramatically more than that. So your reference to doing it sooner rather than later is, in my mind, the only real fiscally responsible way to do it, because the cost, very low likely they're going down, good likeliness that they're going up over 10 years faster than the rate of inflation in the other construction areas. So some delay in this, or some delay in other projects as we push them off to fit this in, might work on that. Now, have we talked at all with the Board of Ed and Central Office about...
Yes.
...how to manage...
We met with them last night and briefed the Board of Education along with Chairman and Dr. Title, explained what we're doing, and they assured us that they have been able to make changes in the waterfall to accommodate this.
Okay, the waterfall being our capital plan.
Our capital plan.
That translates into the waterfall chart that shows our annual debt service. So what we, as much as we can't control the cost of this project, because the PCB cleanup is a real thing and it's really there, we can manage what that costs us on an annual basis by how we adjust other projects to account for this. And I'm just going to ask Mr. Dwyer, as Board of Ed chair, to just kind of come up and just confirm that that's the understanding.
So it'd probably be easier for me to say that everything Mr. Quinn said is absolutely true. Our board did have an opportunity to talk and reconfirm that we understand that we're part of one town, and as we look at capital projects, either on the town side or the school side, it's an iterative process, and as changes need to be made, we need to make changes so that the, call it, I'll say, expense neutral from a capital cost on an annual basis and over the life of the term of the project. We're prepared to make those changes, we have in the past, and we will in the future. The plan has been revised recently in a draft form for the board to be discussing it in the fall, and so we'll make the changes necessary so that the finance department will bless it and say, "Yes, this is expense neutral."
Okay, good. Thank you. Any final questions?
Well, I do, actually. This is probably more for Mr. Quinn.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
When you talk about the EPA and the change in regulation, and you have that question sometimes, why? And I guess that's not the question for today. It is, this is what we have to deal with.
That's correct.
It's just, it's the situation we face, as the first selectman said. When you talked about the roof, the decking, all three walls, are you essentially saying the entire structure, all the way down, has to come down? Is that really when you're saying, when you're laying it out that way? Just to clarify.
I'll let my architect answer that question.
Okay.
Because you wouldn't want me to build your house.
No, but I might want you to manage the finances.
Hi, George Candler, Borison Architects. In addition to the walls, we looked at the roof deck and the roofing material. The roof itself is only good for like another eight years of useful life, and the direction we received after extensive discussion was we're going to rebuild this whole box and leave a near useless roof on the project and as well as this tectum deck. So we incorporated the removal of the roofing and the tectum deck. The structural steel columns and the bar joists are sound, and they're going to be left behind. So you're basically building everything around it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And I guess from a comment standpoint, I know, Mr. Quinn, you have been so adamant to try and keep things in. I'm sure this has been difficult for you and the committee, and I respect the work that all of you have done, you know, for the Board of Education, Mr. Dwyer, and the other members, to try and manage this as much as you can, but this is, as the first selectman said, it's one of those things we have to deal with, and I also believe it's responsible of us to deal with this now in this way to move forward. It's, it will be there waiting for us in 10 years, and certainly will cost considerably more than it would now, so...
I'll tell you, the first selectman's comment on PCB removal is really spot-on. We've seen it on the bids that we, for just a little bit of our remediation, the bids are higher than our estimates were, and they were pretty generous because PCB is becoming very hot. And eventually, you know, I don't know where they're going to put it all. So you're absolutely right. There's a cliff out there someplace.
Thank you. Mr. Lester, did you have something to add?
Stan Lester, I'm the town attorney. We have an executive session later, and one of my matters for the executive session was the consent order. Mr. Quinn has explained a lot of what's going on. I'll explain some of the legal ramifications in closed session at the time, but I don't know if he said it, but I just want to make it clear. It's my understanding that this project cannot proceed until this consent order is agreed to. They can't go out, they can't go to the state and get their bidding done. They, we need to have it in place. Just for the record, I've been dealing with the attorney from the EPA, and we put this order together, and I will be discussing with you in a little bit. I will be asking you to approve it, obviously, but, and Mr. Quinn has actually probably talked about a lot of things I would have talked about in a closed session, but it's fine because I'm sure you would be discussing them when we came back on the record. But it is important to note that this needs to be done. We'll hold up the project otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christian?
A follow-up question. January 2016, is that the gym? Because I know we're looking at earlier dates, can you just confirm for us what the, how the timeline for the entire project may or may not be impacted?
I'll address that. My name is Peter Manning at Gilbane Building Company out of Glassdamer, Connecticut, and we're the construction manager for the project. The timeline on the project has slipped purely as a result of the EPA approval. So currently, as projected, we're starting this project somewhere around October. We had previously scheduled to start at the beginning of the summer, which, because of that, we really have only one summer to do a fair amount of renovation work. So because of that, you know, we're wrestling with swing space issues and those sort of things, the schedule has slipped out till January. The evaluation of the gym construction falls within the schedule that we have for the base project at this point in time, and it really corresponds with doing the abatement of the PCB-impacted walls, starting in the summer of 2015 while children are not in session. But the end date of the gymnasium work is before the end date of the overall project.
So just as a follow-up then, so there are some additional issues, and I trust with Mr. Quinn's leadership that you've all been addressing that in terms of the safety issues as students are there.
Oh, absolutely.
So I'm certainly glad to hear that confirmed and clarified.
Yeah, we've been very helpful dealing with our principal, Ms. Anzio, over there. She's been extremely helpful, and believe me, she's going to keep her people safe.
That's great. I believe she's here, actually, as well, so I see her in the back.
She's always hiding in the back.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Any comments from the public? Please?
Can I take a picture of this?
Brenda Anziano, Principal of Riverfield Elementary School. I get the sense of the body that you're going to support this, and I just want to in advance thank you for that, because that's going to help head off a lot of panic from the parents. We have met as a body and talked about this. I sent a letter out to the community. We have no parents sitting here concerned about this issue because we're out in front of this, and I think that that's really key to the community. So I just want to say in advance, I hope you support it, and if you do, it just helps the whole project move along. And whatever we need to do at Riverfield to make it move along, we're going to make it work.
If I might, it was, I think, at your urging or kind of support, that the gym was kind of moved to be part of the current project, because if I understand correctly, your guideline or your wish was that we get this all done at once, get into the school, make the fixes, and then get out and leave the school on its own and get you back to normal programming as fast as possible.
Correct. And whatever we need to do to make that happen, we're going to, you know, figure it out. So, we have a lot of people in the Board of Ed that are going to help us do it. If we don't have a gym for a while, we'll make it work. So, that's where we are.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Any other comments from the public? Back to the board. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go get them, Mr. Quinn.
Sure, boss.
Oh, let me take it back. We need to amend this first.
Yes.
So, make a motion, we reconsider?
Second.
All right. We have two numbers to make changes to. Do I hear a motion to amend the $1.5 million in the third paragraph on page one to be
So moved.
And I'll second on that. Mr. Quinn, if you'll please just check and make sure that I quoted you correctly. I think we're just pretty much administrative, so any further discussion on that one item?
No.
Any comments from the body, or from the public? Right back to the body. You ready to vote on that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So that item stands before us as amended. There is also now, if I counted correctly, one, two, three, four, five items that need to be, numbers that need to be changed on the first and second pages. And the, what is included now is $15,985,766, and the five places that that number is recorded on here, including when it's both in numeric and in text form, needs to be changed to $16,349,319. May I have a motion to accept that amendment?
So moved.
And I'll second it. And Jen, I think that we've got three numbers, and it's in text written out, I believe, twice. All right. So we're talking about update, the amendment includes updating that both in numeric and in written form, five times in numeric, twice in written form in this resolution. Any further discussion on that?
No.
Any? Sorry?
The agenda item?
Sorry?
The agenda item?
It's the resolution I think that we're passing.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, because that's just a reference to this document, this resolution. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board for the final time. Are we ready to, no, actually, it's not the final time. Are we ready to vote?
I don't know. I'm just going to knock on...
It's not the final, we're voting to amend it, so we still have to vote on the final number, so...
Oh, my God.
Does it, voting on the amendment only, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the item stands before us as amended a second time. Any further discussion on the resolution?
No.
Any comments from the public? Back to the board. As amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wish I could raise my hand for Mr. Kylie, but...
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Thank you.
I hope it's the final time.
Jen, do you have all those? Okay. Even want to note to myself to amend it.
Yeah, I was looking at it, too.
All right, next up before us, item number 12. This is from the Board of Education. It also requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. To hear, consider, and adopt the bond resolution entitled "A Resolution Amending and Restating the Bond Resolution Adopted by the Representative Town Meeting on February 24, 2014," entitled "A Resolution Appropriating a Sum Not to Exceed $3,608,766 for the Costs of Certain Non-Recurring Projects and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriations to Reallocate Bond Proceeds Between Product Categories." I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
And a second. All right. Mr. Mayor, are you going to step us through this?
I guess I can.
Or is it, Mr. Cullen? I didn't mean to change your order of presentation, gentlemen, but.
Well, we don't, first, I guess, in, on February 24, 2014, the resolution that was passed, there were actually two resolutions passed, the total of which was the $3,608,766 that's listed in your agenda item?
Yes.
All right. So when that, when the information was picked up for the agenda, that is the total of two.
Right.
The, so the actual, one of those two that includes the projects that we're going to talk about today, the total of that resolution was one million. You going to write this down?
It's, I believe it's here.
Or you have it in the backup?
Why don't you continue with the presentation? We'll try and keep up.
Right. One million four hundred seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay.
Right.
Got it.
Got it out today. So, and then basically, it's pretty straightforward, just for edification, those not familiar with these kind of projects, the, when the town bodies pass non-recurring bond resolutions, it's, there's an exhibit attached, and each project will have a specific dollar amount assigned to that project. Those numbers, since the projects have not started yet, not been initiated yet, will be estimates. Sometimes the projects will cost less, sometimes the projects will cost more. In this particular incidence, we have one of the projects which has gone over, and is anticipated to go over. Obviously, since we don't have money to do it, we haven't started, the work hasn't started yet. And that is the, one of the boilers is going to cost approximately a hundred and, 182,000 instead of 152,000. On the other side of it, there's the Mill Hill Elementary Partial Roof Replacement, which is budgeted at 461,000, is probably only going to cost close to 300,000. So the net impact is a positive, it's favorable to the town. And so what's proposed here is that a transfer be made from the Mill Hill Elementary Partial Roof Replacement to the Fairfield Ward High School Boiler Replacement, and thereby reducing the bond authorization by eighty-five thousand dollars. And this part of your resolution is to be resolved, that the original resolution be amended and restated, and I'll read as you have in the attachment in your backup.
All right.
One of us commenting is, these transfers allow some cushion in both projects, so that there shouldn't be any overrun issues going forward.
Go ahead, if you like.
Just to clarify the amounts that you just said, I, in the resolution, in the backup material, it says the boiler replacement will go from 152,500 to 202,500. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, yeah, the actual, again, these are projections. Right now, the latest and best estimate is about 185,000.
Okay.
But we've put some cushion in there.
Okay. So that, there is the cushion, that, that's what I wanted to clarify specifically.
We've also left some cushion in the roof. That actual number is, today is looking like 280,000.
Okay.
And we only borrow, just to be clear, of the $3,608,000 that was passed, the combined resolution, we've actually, in our bands, which we just issued last week, we want to issue two and a half million. Part of that is because we know we're not going to be spending all the money in the next year, and part of it is to make sure we never borrow more than we actually need.
Okay, and again, what you're getting back to is we basically, this is in part an authorization to spend the money, because we'll spend it before we borrow it, so always borrowing the exact money, the amount of money that we need. We're not overborrowing at any point based on the process and controls we set.
Try to underborrow a little bit.
So we've got, when we take that 1,478,766, subtract 85,000, we get the? All right, which is throughout each of these. So in terms of any amendments to this, do we have to make any amendments to the resolution as it's before us?
The only amendment you have to make to the resolution is changing, is amending the 3,608 to the 1,478.
Okay, I don't believe that's in the resolution that's before us, that's on the-
It's in the agenda.
It's on the agenda, but it's not in the-
But not in the resolution.
And what we're passing is the resolution that is before us.
The resolution that's before you is correctly stated in our last letter.
326.
But you read the one that's in the agenda, I think.
But it references, it does reference this one in terms of what we're doing. So, any questions? More comments?
No comment, is I fully support this, and I'm glad that this is coming back before us for the approval and the clarification. I appreciate that.
And I'd just add, and as has been pointed out, this is a net positive for the town, because we're spending significantly less than we planned to when we approved this originally. The reason for the overage, as I understand it, that's a boiler. So that's something that is, and Mr. Cullen, perhaps you could explain that. That's a boiler, that's something that's purchased. It's not that work has gone over or anything else, it just it costs more when we finally-
Yeah, Tom Cullen, Director of Operations for Central Office. The boiler at Ward, we actually talked to the contractors that bid it, and said that steel and copper had gone up tremendously this year, which is why it was a little higher than we estimated or figured. The North Stratfield boilers came in right about what we were figuring, we had some good specifications for those bids, and that, and the Mill Hill roof came in very well. That's with the Special Protestant Building Committee, because we'll get reimbursement on that, and our good architect, Silver Petroselli.
Okay, very good.
So we're happy to come back and say that we need all the non-recurring money we asked for.
No, that's excellent, and again, I just want to be clear that the reason for the overage on this item is due to the prices going up on the boiler we're purchasing. It's not a work item issue, it's not-
That's correct.
An overage on work or anything else associated with that.
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you. Any further comments or questions?
No, just as long as we're clear that the resolution we're passing has this amount as opposed to the amount on the agenda.
Yeah, we should have a way of referencing these, maybe going forward, we can find a way to label these, so it's a specific document that we're referencing on resolutions, rather than just referring to numbers kind of within the body, so we can make sure if there's any corrections, we get those on that. Any comments from the public? Mr. Dwyer, did you have anything to add to this? All right, thank you. All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Mr. Maravio's here as well.
That's it. Next up is from the tax collector, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended. Do you have a motion to consider?
So moved.
And I'll second that. Any amendments?
Yes, I move to amend and add the amount at the end of the sentence.
Yes.
Two thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars and 70 cents.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
The item stands before us, says amended. Any further discussion on the item?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next up, with the town attorney, private executive session concerning pending litigation. If I could ask the cameras and the lights to stop recording at this point, and ask anybody who's not invited into our private executive session to leave us at this time.
I would ask that you invite Linda Powell and also Tom Quinn for the next one, we're going to do two.
Okay.
I'm looking for this one out.
Those can you give to Jen though? No, no, no.
All right, we are now back in public session. There were no motions made nor votes taken in private executive session. I would entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the town attorney to approve the voluntary compliance agreement with HUD.
So moved.
All right, and I will second that. Any further discussion at this time?
No.
All right. There's no public here at this point. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'll accept a recommendation, a motion to accept the recommendation of the town attorney to approve the consent agreement with the EPA.
So moved.
All right, and I'll second that. Any further discussion here?
No.
Okay. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
With those two motions made, we are now back to the agenda. To hear, consider, and act upon any communications, there's none that I'm aware of. To hear, consider, and act upon any other business that shall probably come before this board at this meeting, there's none that I'm aware of. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.